So, yeah, if we could put like on that floor or somewhere, we could still see it. And just watch when the sun rises.
Is everyone about ready to start? Good evening. I'd like to declare a call and call the January 20th, 2015 meeting of the Board of Education to order. It appears that our student member is not here to lead us in the pledge. We do have a Boy Scout member here with us, Sam Burzinski. Would you mind standing in, Sam? Would you like to come up to the microphone? I know I'm catching you short here, but we'd love to have you help us with the pledge. And then we do a moment of silence afterwards. If everyone will stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sam. Can you stay there a moment and talk to us?
Thank you.
Can you tell us who was there with you this evening?
Uh, my dad.
Hi, Dad. Can you tell us what school you attend?
Uh, Northern Middle.
Okay, and you're in what grade?
Seventh.
Excellent. Can you give me some idea of what your favorite thing in school is, the thing you dislike? And if you were principal for a day, what would you change at your school?
I kind of prefer just to read. And I really dislike, like, all the disciplinary issues going on.
Really? Okay. And what would you change if you could?
Like, even stricter than there already are, like, disciplinary actions.
Very good. How long have you been in the Boy Scouts?
Almost a year now.
Very good. Is there anything in particular you like to do outside of school and Boy Scouts? Do you have a favorite hobby or?
Reading.
Excellent.
Very good.
Well, thank you for attending this evening, and thank you for standing in and helping us with the pledge. Take care.
All right, now that my mic is on, we can do it all over again, Sam. You want, no. Okay, moving on. Any other introductions? I will say that Mrs. Fisher, as we've noticed, is not here with us this evening. She is out of town. Do any of my colleagues have guest recognitions they'd like to make? All right, then we'll go on to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you. Dr. Harding, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the agenda? The question is on the agenda as recommended. All those in favor? Okay, we have six zero with the student concurring. And minutes, looking for approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I'd like to move for approval of the minutes that were included in our board packet. One set of minutes is for the work session of Tuesday, January 6, 2015. One for the closed session held that same day, Tuesday, January 6, 2015. And the third set for the business meeting, also that day, Tuesday, January 6, 2015.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes?
Mrs. Brightman, I do, I do have a few corrections.
Okay.
If I may, do you want them all at once? There's several.
Would you, would you consider them insignificant corrections? That we would not need to discuss them separately and just take them in total? Do you consider more grammatical or?
I think they could be done in total.
Okay.
The business meeting minutes. Sorry, give me a second here.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
On page 22, this is in the paragraph at the, at the top of 22, the sentence, "Mrs. Brightman shared that she was impressed with the amount of through and professionalism of the presentation." I think that's thought that was meant there.
A T?
Thought, as opposed to through.
Thought, with an R, all right.
Okay, and then on page 24, the paragraph at the top, the sentence, "Mrs. Williams referenced the digital learning plan and asked if the term 'essential digital curriculum' exists." I believe what I asked was if the curriculum called 'essential digital curriculum' existed or if it were in development. So I'd like to have the word 'term' removed, ask if the essential digital curriculum exists or is it in development.
Okay. Everyone following the discussion, right?
And.
Twenty-four, top of the page.
It's, the sentence begins in the first line with Mrs.
Do you have it, Mr. Ridenhour? Okay, go ahead.
And again, on page 24, it's the second full paragraph that begins, "Mrs. Williams shared," it's the sentence, "She reported that Dr. Grasmit meet with Frances Glenn Danning, Maryland Association of Boards of Education, MAAB Executive Director," and MAAB. That should be changed to, the meet should be met, and it should be the MAAB president, was not all of MAAB, it was the, so the insertion of MAAB president.
Okay.
And that would be my corrections.
So we're looking at four corrections. Did everyone follow those? Any discussion or concern about the significance, if we can do them as minor changes? Okay, is everyone, is there a consensus to just go ahead and make those adjustments? Everyone in favor, just to be sure? I'm seeing nodding heads, just very good. Thank you. So done. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Now we're on to the original motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor? Thank you. Six zero, and student rep concurring. All right, there is, no one signed up to speak before the board, but I would like to ask if anyone is here who would like to come share some comments or thoughts with us. Please come forward. No takers this evening? Okay, thank you very much. There's no old business, so we're moving on to new business, the consent agenda. Mrs. Freeman, thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. I have two series of reports for you this evening. The first are the two bids that are under the consent agenda, the first being the bid for toner and ink printer cartridges. This is a new bid. Pricing was solicited for the highest volume toner and ink cartridges that were purchased system-wide last year. Thirteen companies submitted bids. We received bids for Hewlett-Packard, Lexmark, IBM, the original equipment manufacturer cartridges. And then we received bids for what we refer to as non OEM, which are mostly recycled and not manufactured by the original equipment manufacturers of the printers. So we had both to compare prices. This recommendation is to move forward with the non OEM cartridges at significant class savings over the price of the original OEM cartridges. This approval of this contract would provide high-quality, lower-cost, non OEM remanufactured cartridges for all schools and offices. The contract would be effective from the date of board approval through December 31 of 2015, and it includes options for annual renewal for two additional years. This bid is recommended to be awarded to the second lowest-priced bidder academic supplier of Chula Vista, California, in an estimated annual amount of $70,477.84. Also on this consent packet is a RFP for a new, fully-integrated student formative assessment system. Proposals were received on December 2nd. We held a pre-bid meeting here in this building on November 18th. The intent of the RFP is to establish a contract with a qualified and experienced company with the software and tools to support instruction in the field of formative assessment. We had very good bid participation. We had eight companies who submitted proposals, and the evaluation committee that carefully reviewed all of those proposals. The primary purpose of these formative assessment software tools is to provide educators with instructionally useful information related to how students will demonstrate Maryland career and college readiness standards, proficiencies. These assessments are technology-based, career embedded, excuse me, curriculum-embedded performance tasks that provide actionable information to the teachers. Proposals, as I mentioned, were carefully evaluated by a committee. The committee included representatives from curriculum and instruction, school administration, testing and accountability, and purchasing. The highest rated of the six companies were invited and made a presentation to the evaluation committee on December 18th. The committee narrowed down the field to two firms, and those two firms made a presentation of their software to our teachers and central office instructional and curricular staffs here on January 8th. The evaluation of the proposals looked at the ability of the software and the bidder to supply the required assessments, their qualifications and abilities of personnel to be assigned to our contract, a record of successful past performance, and a detailed plan for performing the implementation of the software, as well as training and technical assistance and pricing. The procurement review committee is recommending, based on the recommendation by the evaluation committee, that the board accept the proposal submitted by School City Incorporated of Santa Clara, California, at a total cost of $200,000. After the implementation period, the maintenance of the system will be about $75,000 annually. Software will eliminate the need for expenses associated with purchasing Agile Minds assessment, as well as measures of academic progress tests that are currently being used in the school district. The schedule anticipates that the software will be available for educator use beginning in March, and, as I said, the contract would be effective from January 20th on board approval through May 31 of 2015. The Maryland State Department of Education has provided a grant of $177,520 towards this purchase.
That concludes the packet information for you. Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Is there a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the board approve the quotes, bids, proposals for remanufactured toner and ink printer cartridges to, which is bid number 2015-20, to, I'm sorry, to academic supplier, excuse me, at a total of $70,477.84. And formative assessment system, RFP number 2015-29, to School City Inc. at a local cost of $22,480 plus the $177,520 state grant.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gessford, thank you. Discussion? Questions for Mrs. Freeman? Yes?
Yes. Looking at the executive summary of content, am I correct in hearing that the software is going to replace the MAP tests that we're using currently? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? That we're no longer going to be using measures of academic progress tests and we'll be using these instead is?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Dr. DeMain, why don't you come forward? Dr. DeMain is our chief academic officer. Maureen, would you please come forward too and talk about how you plan to use this for the board?
One of the, good evening to the members of the board. One of the benefits that we saw of this particular software, and actually, I need to back up and let, allow Ms. Margovich tell us how we began looking for this particular software and, or platform, and then how it can be used, how we found that instead of duplicating what we're currently doing, it can actually serve as a replacement, so.
I don't think we have to go through the whole story because I just went through that, but I think let's, let's speak to the question that was asked. Are we going to use the MAP assessments or are we not?
We won't. We will use this. We will use School City.
Mr. President. Go ahead. Melissa, if you have a follow-up?
Do you have?
Right ahead. I'm still processing.
Okay.
You reserve the right to answer further, ask a further question, Mr. Ridenhour.
Thank you. My assumption, and I think you just answered it, with the MAP and Agile Minds also will be out the door. Okay, now, just as a, as a result, my question is, as a result of this new, this new assessment program and assessments, are the assessments going to be substantially different, first of all? And secondly, will the core curriculum that we use in the areas that these assessments will be a part of, is that going to change? My concern is, Dr. DeMain, that, you know, we're basically asking teachers, you know, it just looks like maybe we're asking teachers to start over, you know, or how are things going to be different for them?
You are not. I think this will actually make it easier since, again, we have moved to Maryland's career and college-ready standards. We know that MAP was not aligned, is not aligned with those standards. So this assessment will be. Agile Minds, their assessment system is aligned to the Maryland college and career-ready standards. So for that set of coursework, no, it won't be much different because, again, Agile Minds is already aligned to that MAP, it's not. So it will be different for those grade levels and classes that participated in MAP, but it's better alignment, or it is actually aligned, so it will be better for teachers. They will get information that they could use to immediately change instruction.
So they're, they're basically going to be, the material that they're teaching is not going to change?
The material that they are teaching, that teachers are currently teaching, will not change.
Okay. Okay. All right, for now.
Mrs. Hirschman, I think, I know this first.
It says that it will eliminate the need for Agile Minds. How long have we been using that?
We are piloting Agile Minds for the first time this year. This is our first year of that pilot.
So we are not going to be using that then anymore?
We will not be using the assessment part of Agile Minds, the testing system that goes along with it. There's no need. Again, we used that because we didn't have an assessment system that was aligned with the curriculum. Again, this one system does it all. There's no need for both, so.
So this assessment will be also aligned with Agile Minds?
Well, since Agile Minds is aligned with the core standards, yes, it's aligned.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
I know you remember, for, for some time I've expressed concern about the alignment of the standards with MAPs. And what I'm hearing you say is that these formative assessments are better aligned. So now we're sure that we have a program of assessments that are more than adequately aligned, that are going to give us the best possible information in terms of formative assessments.
Correct.
Okay, and how long did we have MAPs in place? I believe we're in the third year of it. We had two years, and it was piloted for one year at the TIF schools. Okay. So now we're looking at another $200,000 for a new assessment to replace that, that's going to be better for us in terms of better alignment? And is there another benefit? I'm hoping that there's something else additionally in terms of information that we're going to get from this? I think one of the biggest advantages is it's online, so that the information would be available immediately to the teachers to guide instruction.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mrs. Brightman?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions, because I think a lot of parents out there are used to getting the MAP tests, and I just want to understand what is going to look different from the point of view of a parent and what comes home. Part of the MAP test that I like is that three times a year you get a document that comes home from the school that describes how your student is progressing. It gives you a Lexile level so that as a parent you can sort of track the student's progress, at least by that assessment, pretty well over the course of a number of years. Is there a component similar to that in the new assessment that we'll be giving?
No, there's not a component that's similar to that, but we would have this aligned to the grade camp, or sorry, to the grade book. So it would be something that the parents who are on parent view could look and see, track their student's progress based on that.
Oh, so, so there is the feedback mechanism, it's just not, the feedback mechanism that comes to parents, it's just not mailed to them, it's available?
Correct.
And you said that these assessments are given online as, given on a device of some sort, as the MAP tests are?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of the grant for Maryland was that it needed to offer an online component.
Great. I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hirschman.
I have just one other question about this. Every time you mention online assessments, it sort of makes me shudder because when we started the testing this past week, I was told that some of the schools had to shut down their computers in order for the testing to take place in other schools. Is our equipment that far behind what we're trying to do with it, that we need to close down computers in schools in order to take these tests? And if so, and we start another one, is that going to cause the same problem within the school system?
At the beginning of the week, what we experienced was not enough bandwidth, and we have since corrected that problem and doubled the bandwidth. So essentially what we've done is kind of, if you think of it as a road, we've widened the lanes, so that now we have more ability for the data to pass through. So we expanded our bandwidth this week. So we're more able to do it.
Okay, well, I know when I was teaching at North, we would get information about shutting our computers down, but this was during the AP tests and so on where the kids were working on the tests within the building. So when I heard that this was now affecting other schools, it really sort of, like I said, a shudder went through me. And I, because I wasn't used to that happening, and I'm not sure whether that happened when I was teaching or not, because all I remember is that we had to shut our computers down whatever we were working on while the students within the building took the tests. So you say this is corrected and this would not happen?
We've had testing on Wednesday and Thursday. We've had no problems with HSA testing and without limitations on the other schools.
And all the other schools could use their computers normally?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Swipes?
Again, looking at the summary, it says that this assessment system for educator use will be beginning March of this year. What kind of transition, what kind of PD is going to be required for teachers to stop with the MAPs and start, start this up? We were planning on having a limited rollout for teachers that would like to start using the program and then fully implement it next year so that we could offer PD over the summer when the teachers had more time that they could focus on it. So it'll be a voluntary, voluntary use of? Starting in March, yes.
Okay. Dr. Wilcox, do you want to step in?
No.
No.
This was, this was just sort of a question that Mrs. Williams had sort of continued of that, and what I was wondering then is, do you know that there are teachers who will volunteer for this this year?
Yes, we've, we've had, especially the principals that were involved in some of the evaluation, they're very excited to have their teachers work with us. And we had very good reception for the teachers that came in and saw the demonstrations on January the 8th.
Okay, thank you.
So in many ways, this is a natural progression that we just. So, in many ways, this is a natural progression that we just have to go through. If you remember right, when we started the MAP assessments, one of the things we talked about internally, what is, it was a placeholder assessment for us, because we had given up some of our other assessment tools, yet we could not find at that time something that was not only nationally norm-referenced to give us an idea of where our kids stood, not only in Maryland, but across competition within the United States. So, again, I say this is a natural progression, we've now found something that works more effectively. One of the things that was not mentioned was the fact that these items, while they're not only aligned, they also look and feel more like what we believe the PARK assessments will look like. So our kids will have some opportunity to experience how to use some of the drag-down menus, some of the pop-in boxes that are now going to be a part of the PARK assessment. So we think some of that look and feel is going to be very beneficial to our kids. The other thing that it does do, because it is more PARK-like, it gives us another opportunity to kind of see how this rolls out across the system. So to your issue about bandwidth and computer technology, while we're going through a stress test period, I believe on the 26th of this month, is that correct? And then we're following up with a follow-up, the 6th or the 2nd of February? This assessment piece will give us the opportunity to really see how our systems perform under pressure, in a really a kind of a harmless way for kids. There are no specific consequences to them, other than the fact that how well they do on these tests will help their teachers to determine what their instruction looks like going forward. I think the other thing I'd point out is that when you take a look at the Agile Mind implementation, it is a pilot. The assessment portion of that is about $82,000. So ending that next year will more than cover the fact that we now will have a $75,000 going-forward cost. So in essence, we're going to save money by making this adjustment. And then if, when we give up the MAP assessments, in total, we'll save approximately $200,000 a year that we're now spending for those assessments. So, all in all, this is a net positive for the district in terms of the tools that we're going to make available to our teachers, and the costs that we're spending for assessment. One of the things I think you should be very proud of, your administrative team, is that they bought in part and parcel to the fact that we have to reduce the number of assessments that we're giving in this district. We have to return more time to our teachers, and this is a first step in that. You'll see other assessments going by the wayside in the not-too-distant future. Just real quick, and, you know, there's questions, most of the questions have been answered, but, again, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, if you don't mind. You're telling me that Agile Mind, the course curricula that we have and have been utilizing with that, and I see my friend back there, we're still going to be using that? Or will there be some changes in the math curriculum? Are there going, any kind of changes as a result? I mean, we're not using their assessment. Are we still using the other elements of Agile Mind?
We're not expanding Agile Mind for next year, so the schools that currently are using that curriculum will have it. We're still, again, piloting that. However, we have all of our classes, all of our middle and high, and Dr. Burhans can join me, participating in Agile assessment. And that's the part that we are ending definitively.
I think it's important to recognize that it is still a pilot, and I think there's a lot of conversation that has to be had. I absolutely have great respect for both Kara and Dr. Domain, but they have to report to me at some point about the efficacy of this pilot, and that's not taken place yet. So I would, I would absolutely share what Dr. Domain said, is that we're not going to expand this pilot, because I don't think we had a great year in terms of the initial pilot. But I think it's still true that the verdict is even out, that will we be doing Agile Mind anywhere next year? I think that verdict is, there's still water to go under the bridge. I'm not here to say, pull the rug out from under them, I'm here to say, we have, we said it was a pilot. A pilot implies that you're going to talk about how well it went. We've not had that conversation yet. That's perfect, you don't even have to waste your time, my dear. Thank you, that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Since you walked all the way up, would you like to make a comment? Anything you'd like to clarify?
No, I obviously completely agree with Dr. Wilcox.
That's a smart name to say.
Since he's the boss, I thought that was a good idea, no. But also just to say, it is a pilot, because we constantly look at what other resources are out there and what's best for our students. And so, just because we're piloting that, doesn't mean that the math team and I aren't continually looking for resources to support our students and look at what's best for them. So we'll be having that conversation with Dr. Wilcox.
Very good. I think we probably touched on most of this, so I'm going to call the question, Mr. Ridenhour's motion on the consent agenda. All those in favor? Those opposed? So it is five to one with Mr. McHose, you concurred with the majority.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I would like to ask my colleagues if we could pause in the agenda. Our special guest arrived a little late, and I would like to recognize him and his mother, have him come up to the mic and share a little bit with us here. So Jonathan, would you come forward, please? To this mic right there. Can you pull it down? Very good. Can you introduce, I believe that's your mom behind you, right? Okay, you're going to speak to me, right? Okay. We have to do more than shake our head here, or this is going to be a tough conversation. So this is Jonathan Thompson, fifth-grade student at Fountaindale Elementary. And can you tell, tell us something about yourself and what you like to do at school?
At school, I like, my favorite subject is math.
Is math?
Yes.
Okay, that's a popular one up here, okay. Anything else you'd like to do at school?
I like to, I like to read and, and do social studies.
It's well-balanced, I like it. Is there anything you really don't like, and you'd like it to go away?
Nothing really.
That's a good question, too.
That's the best answer I've heard all night, thank you.
Very good, I appreciate you coming. I understand you and your mom got a little lost. I'm sorry. Maybe you'll come back and do the pledge with us, another opportunity?
Yes.
Okay. What do you do when you're not in school? Uh-oh, mom's prompting you. What is, what did she say?
Football.
Football, okay. Have you followed all the different games over the last few weekends?
What?
The professional football games? Do you have a favorite team? Mom's coming up to help you out with this one.
Green Bay Packers, yes.
The Green Bay Packers are my favorite team.
You get a ride home now, that's great.
So can I ask you one question then?
Yes.
Do you play football?
Yes.
And what position do you play?
I play receiver, running back, safety, and corner.
Outstanding, outstanding. It sounds like you have the offensive and defensive side of the ball covered.
It looks like mom is very supportive of your, oh.
That's terrific.
I'm sure we'll hear great things about you.
I look forward to seeing you playing at North High Stadium then. Get you on the turf.
Uh-oh.
Now you're staying here with us. It's a recruiting war, mom, we're going to recruit him.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, I appreciate your willingness to allow me to pause there. So we're back on still a new business consideration, Mrs. Freeman, professional design of a multipurpose room for Williamsport High School.
Yes, we solicited and received quotation proposals from the companies that were awarded the on-call IDQ contract for on-call architectural engineering services. I've included in the pack the summary of the quotation proposals that were returned to us. The acceptance, acceptance of the recommendation will establish a contract for design work for an addition at Williamsport High School. The scope includes that multi-designing of an addition that would include a multipurpose room, a girls' team room, a concession stand, and a storage area, as well as includes the removal of any hazardous materials, and then construction and bidding design documents sufficient for putting the project out to competitive bid. Bushy Fight Morin Architects was the lowest responsible bidder who made a proposal, and we're recommending that we accept that proposal for Bushy Fight Morin Architects of Hagerstown to perform the design work. $54,574 is the total.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Freeman. This requires a motion to approve this quotation.
Madam President, I move to approve the quotation proposal for professional design of a multipurpose room for Williamsport High School to Bushy Fight Morin Architects at
Thank you, Dr. Hardings, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Dr. Wilcox, you asked to be recognized.
Yes, I did, because I wanted to be sure that the board and community clearly understood what we were asking tonight. We are asking you to approve the expense of $54,000. In essence, to do the due diligence, for us to take a look at what the costs and the attendant challenges would be with this project. We are not asking you to fund the project tonight, we are asking you to fund the due diligence, so that we can do that, so that we can in fact then come to you with another set of questions about how we would go about funding this proposal overall. So again, this evening, we are only here to ask you for the authority to do the due diligence, that is, to have Bushy Fight, Fight Moraine, I can't say the name, BFM, come in, take a very careful look at this, do some architectural drawings, so that we can get some costs. Again, we are not asking you to approve the construction of this project tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Seeing Mrs. Hirschman.
The $54,000 then is for exactly what?
It is for, you want to come forward, Mr. Michaels? I'll let you take it from there then. I saw you sneaking up.
The $54,000 would be all architect and engineering services required to complete the project. The way we have our bid package put together for A&E Services, we ask our four or five vendors that have already been pre-approved by the board to submit their total sum bid, and we also ask them to submit hourly costs, based on the various people that will work on the project. At any point in the project, if the board determines that they have no interest in the project, either in the short term, the next year, or the next two or three years, we could stop work on the A&E Services, and we would negotiate a settlement based on the number of hours that they have submitted. So right now, it's broken out of the four parts. Design services, which are approximately $35,000, then it's into bidding services, so that stage wouldn't come until the point we actually bid the project, that's a fairly minor cost. There's about $15,000 involved in construction. While the project's actually being constructed, the architects responsible see quality insurance, respond to construction questions, design questions, and then there's closeout of the project. So we have those costs broken out, and again, if in three weeks we suddenly decide, nope, there's no way, this is never going to be built, we would negotiate with BFM, how much time have they put into the project at this point, which right now is zero, and maybe in two or three weeks it'll still be zero, and we would negotiate a settlement cost. But it, this is soup to nuts for the amount that, that the motion is for. Takes us all the way to completion of the project.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question about the fund source. It says general fund. How much money is in the general fund for that specific kind of activity?
We have an A&E line, and it's also contained within the facility's budget, and sometimes we move money around to cover various services, but we have enough money to cover the A&E services in that line right now. I don't know the total amount.
But would we have anything left for some other schools' activities and so on?
We currently have under design, and at our last facilities meeting, we reviewed about six or seven projects that are in design right now, and those services are being paid out of that fund.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Breitner?
Yes.
Just one quick question, maybe it's more for Dr. Wilcox. If, if the project ends up going forward, this $54,000, I assume counts towards part of the contribution that the school system would make towards the project, not the contribution, obviously, that the boosters would make? Because the model was presented to us was sort of half and half, so this would, this would certainly go on our side of the ledger if the project goes forward.
Yes, this would be an expense of the school system.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions. Question before us, Dr. Hardings made the motion. All those in favor? Six-zero with student rep concurring. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Wilcox, you said you did or did not have any updates?
I do, I have one that I'd like to share with the board and with the larger community. As folks know, we are getting ready to really move forward with the construction of West City. In fact, if you have been out looking at their newest school location, you'll see that red iron is going up, construction is well underway. But that brings us to an important moment, and that is to stop calling it for a compass point and actually start thinking about what we will name this facility. And so the committee that was pulled together, that was made up of parents, teachers, administrators, community members at large, has been meeting, and they are ready to meet with the board. And Mr. Wright, who has been leading this initiative for us, has told me that I can share with the community right now some of the potential names that will be presented to you. And so I'm going to share with you that as the committee has talked and deliberated, they've come up with five names that they're forwarding to you in no particular order, but I want to share them with you right now. They've come up with the name of Hager's Crossing Elementary, Jonathan Hager Elementary, Founder's Elementary, Crossroads Elementary, and Spring House Elementary. Now, at an upcoming board meeting, we will have the committee come and talk about the rationale for how they came to these names, and talk to you a little bit about their due diligence and deliberance. And then it will be up to the board to kind of outline the process that they will use to name the building. We're very excited about being at this moment in time, having some great names that have a great historical significance, and some that just kind of feel fun. So I'm excited to announce this to the community, and we will let it go forward from here, probably as early as the board's next meeting in early February.
Thank you. And for those, that would be policy FF that covers the procedure for naming of a school, and we'll be following that policy. Thank you. Personnel action. Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed earlier today in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review and consideration this evening.
I need a motion for this action.
Move to accept a personnel recommendation from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. Discussion? All those in favor? Six-zero, and the student rep abstains. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Francisco. Reports to the board, I'm not sure how many committees have met since the reorganization, but I'll start and sort of see if there's any, any comments of that, or I'll start with you at the end. Mr. McHose, anything with student government?
We have nothing to report right now. The winter is usually a pretty slow time for us.
Would you maybe like to report on something to do with wrestling at North High? Would you maybe like to report on something to do with wrestling at North High? Just saying.
Well, the North High wrestling team's undefeated right now, and we just won the Hub Cup, and wrestling Boonsboro tomorrow.
And I believe you had some part in that?
Yes, I took second place at the Hub Cup.
And what weight?
One-fifty-two.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. McHose is also very humble. Right now, I believe you are twelve and one, fourteen and one?
Twelve and one.
Twelve and one. He's showing a lot of people the lights in the gym at North High, which is a good thing to do.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Harshman.
We will be having a curriculum and instruction committee meeting Tuesday, January 27th, in the board conference room. The agenda will be posted, and we just did some time changing, but I think we're still at eleven o'clock. Anyway, that will be posted also on the website.
Mrs. Williams.
Facilities will be meeting also on Tuesday, January 27th. We will be meeting at 901 Frederick Street, and I'm not sure of the time. Do you have it, Mrs. Breitman? Is it nine o'clock?
Well, that's, and I was going to ask, I think Facilities and Curriculum Instruction were scheduled to all both meet at noon.
Okay.
Twelve to one on the main schedule. I was going to ask if all the chairs had looked at the schedule and worked with their staff liaison on this. That's a no, maybe?
Yes.
Sort of? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Reidenauer, does that time for HR at nine to ten seem to work for you on the fourth Tuesdays?
Nine to ten?
On the...
I thought it was nine to ten forty-four.
It's really up to the chairs. I know that Mrs. Fisher had put out...
What was the second time for meetings on that day? Because I must have misunderstood or missed, you know?
And we can, again, we had Policy and HR meeting at nine o'clock. HR ended at ten.
Okay.
And then the next meeting after that was Finance at ten forty-five. And then we have two, Curriculum and Instruction and Facilities. Everyone's looking confused.
No, that's fine. No, I'm not. Finance isn't confused.
I think the confusion is that we're having two meetings at the same time, which is something that we haven't done in the past. And, yes, and we discussed this. Mrs. Fisher put it together, and we thought it would be a more efficient use of the time, and she was able to arrange it so that no member of any committee was put in an impossible situation because of that scheduling. So I'm just reminding everyone, as you meet with your committee liaison, that was the time, and I think everyone received a copy of that. So it's not mandatory. This was sort of just a suggestion, friendly suggestion on a way we could be more efficient. So, all right, that was popular. We're moving on now. Mrs. Williams, you started or have you finished with Facilities?
Yes, we are meeting at noon.
Very good.
Unless Dr. Michael tells me otherwise, on January 27th at 901 Frederick Street. I think the place is the important thing, because we won't be here, we'll be at 901 Frederick Street.
Is it 901 or 701?
Seven oh one. Sorry. Sorry, we're backing up two blocks to seven oh one.
Wrong time, wrong place. We're off to a bright start. Okay, then. Mr. Gessford.
Finance Committee is set to go at ten forty-five.
Love it, and he's the newest chair, and look how organized he is.
And where? And what's the date?
I met with Chris South this past week on Friday, and it was determined that was a good time for him and his colleagues to meet. So it'll be this Tuesday, the 27th, at ten forty-five, and it will be up in the conference room upstairs, near his desk, so he can...
Excellent. And again, I do encourage all the chairs to meet with their committee liaisons if they haven't already. Thank you, Mr. Gessford.
Mr. Reidenauer?
Yes, we, HR, HR will be meeting, but we will not start our meeting till ten o'clock. We'll go from ten to ten-thirty in the HR conference room on the third floor. Okay.
And the time, again, is not...
Ten o'clock, from ten to ten-thirty.
Ah, half hour. Okay, very good. Thank you. Well, that was painful. Let's see, is Mr. Trotta, there you are, if you could come forward. Dr. Hardings, did you have any, anything you'd like to add, any type of...
I think we best let it sit where it is.
Yeah, I'm glad I brought my cheat sheet. I would have... Okay. What we'd like to do, and the reason I expanded, or the agenda committee expanded the time for this, was so we would have an opportunity, as is listed in policy BJ, for the Legislative Response Team to give a report during this time. So we're going to start out with Mr. Trotta giving a preview of some binders that he and Mrs. Brown have put together that will be handed out to all board members. We're going to give some to the media, of course, Julie Green, to the county commissioners, to our delegations, so that we can all have the talking points, the background information on our legislative package as it goes forward, and if Mr. Trotta knows where he is and at what time he can start.
Thank you. Good evening. Good to see all of you. We are preparing for your consideration and use during the legislative session, a binder, and we've set it up in several different sections. The first section will have contact information, key telephone numbers, and emails of individuals that we may need to contact during the session. We also will have in the binder a calendar. We have updated the Board of Education's calendar for the session. We also have secured a copy of the General Assembly's calendar for the session. That'll be in the binder. On November 4th of last year, the board adopted its legislative priorities. It's a very comprehensive summary of the board's objectives for this session, and we've placed that in the binder also for your consideration. We'll have another section that concerns the innovative initiatives that the board will be undertaking during the session. It will include an executive summary, and will provide you with information with regard to each one of those initiatives. Then we have a general reference section. We will include in that section the priorities identified by our delegation, and also a copy of policy BJ, which sets forth the process and procedures for the board's legislative program. I think you'll find this document to be very helpful. It'll provide you with vital information that you will need during the session, and also as we submit legislative reports, the binder will be of such a size that you'll be able to place that information into your binder for your easy reference.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd like to add that we have removed pre-K and virtual high school issues or topics from the legislative requests from the delegation, and the reason being is pre-K was, an expansion of pre-K was recently funded by the federal government on a new early childhood, I call it baby race to the top, where there's sixty million dollars over four years coming to the state of Maryland, and eighteen of the counties applied and did receive a portion of that money, including Washington County. So we do have the money. The superintendent and staff will be looking at the expansion and moving ahead with pre-K pilot or our own expansion of that. So there really wasn't an legislative ask at this time. So that's still certainly an initiative and a priority of ours, but there won't be a need for a bill on that. Also, the virtual high school is sort of in the same situation where the work group that was centered around that, that I know Dr. Hardings and Dr. Wilcox served on, I'm not sure there's been a meeting recently, and I'm not sure if that work group is still in existence or dissolved, but I know that at this point, there isn't an legislative ask for that one either. I don't know if either of you have an update?
Correct. No ask.
No ask.
That's correct. There's no ask. The task, what is it called? The Advisory Council on Virtual Schools, or Virtual Learning, still exists. They met in November, I believe. I was out of town and wasn't able to attend it. I believe they meet again in February.
That's correct.
So the council's still active. I just couldn't, I just didn't make the last meeting.
So that's sort of the update on that. We do have, coming up before us, our Day in Annapolis, which is January 29th. So we wanted everyone to be aware of that. That is in collaboration with the Mabe Day in Annapolis luncheon, which I believe several of us attended last year. And we'll have, I believe that information is in the binder?
Yes, we're finalizing the schedule, the various appointments. We've been working with Mrs. Cade to get that finalized.
So once we have that, we'll share that information with everyone. Also, just as a reminder, and it is on our events calendar, that the Coalition has a Day in Annapolis, the lobbying coalition, on February 4th. And so I think that's sort of the update on the, what we know at this point in time. I think we'll go through the three remaining initiatives, the alternative financing, the streamlining of local certification, and the reappointment for the superintendent's contract exemption. And I would think that, Mr. Trotta, if you'd like to just give us a short update on the alternative financing?
Certainly. This would be a bill that would authorize the Board of Education to borrow up to ten million dollars. It could utilize bonds, it could utilize private financing or a combination thereof. The board would pass a resolution with regard to a particular project, outlining the project, how much the project would cost, and that would be the nature of the legislation that would be introduced. Baltimore City in the year 2000 was given the authority to issue bonds, and actually that has increased since that time period to up to two-hundred million dollars. They have authorization. We're only seeking authorization for up to ten million dollars.
And that's not all at one time?
Not all at one time. It could be several projects, it could be one project. And what would happen is, is as the debt is retired, let's say that you had a two-million-dollar project, and you paid off some of that money, it would allow you to borrow up to the remaining capacity, up to ten million dollars.
And again, I think this would allow us to leverage some grants and some very creative and innovative projects that we have here in the county without having to go through our normal process, and so it makes us more flexible. Any other comments on the financing from, okay? Then the streamlining of local certification in critical shortage areas. Dr. Wilcox, I know we've already agreed to these. I didn't know if you had any updates or...
Well, the only update that I would offer is that what we're trying to do with this legislation is to make sure that we can put the appropriate teacher in front of young people when we need them. And by that, I simply mean this, is that every year at some point in time, we run out of qualified, certified applicants, and then we need to take a look at who would best stand in front of our children and young people. This would give us some additional authority locally to certify people to stand in those places when we've declared a critical shortage. This is in no means an attempt to bypass traditional certification. It's in every means an opportunity to serve our kids well.
I sort of see it as an adjunct or an at-will. How would, is that it correct?
You know, they would still be, no, I think that as we look at this, one of the things we're going to have to look at is the interplay of these folks who come to us and the master agreement. I believe that they would be qualified to be members of the bargaining group and would be represented. The question for us would simply be, could they achieve, having not met all of the state requirements, could they ever be eligible for a professional services certificate, which meant that they had gained the tenure piece with it? But again, these are emergency hires, so they're not necessarily people that we anticipate are going to stick with for long periods of time.
Okay. Very good. Dr. Hardings, would you like to tackle the reappointment exemption?
Sure. I discussed the superintendent's reappointment exemption for Washington County with Delegate Seraphini, and explained to him in detail what it is exactly we were trying to do. I know there was an article in the newspaper that communicated some of the idea, but I think there were some who were still confused about exactly what it is we're trying to do. I think Delegate Seraphini understood it well. He assures me that the delegation understands it well. He was having a bill drafted as recently as this week. He expected to be able to drop it sometime today. He said he should be able to drop it sometime today. So as soon as we receive the final version of that legislation or the bill, we'll be sure to distribute it to the members of the board as it comes to the Legislative Response Team.
Okay. Thank you. I think the only other three items, and Mr. Trotta and I were looking at what, reading the tea leaves, what we think some of the big issues might be, and charter, public charter school reform seems to be a topic, and I know that Governor-elect Hogan, and he is still Governor-elect until tomorrow at noon, has taken on someone in his executive office to look at how that might develop here in Maryland. So there is some concern that will probably need to come up. I know this is on our list of legislative priorities, that local boards of education should retain local control over the issuance of charters, and charter schools should be held to the same accountability and educational standards that apply to all public schools. What, just briefly, the charter school report that came out where legislation may be, is to create a state-level independent chartering board called an ICB that would be an additional active statewide authorizer of charter schools. The other piece of legislation that is expected is to institute a time-limited subsidy to the local districts that partially subsidizes the per-pupil cost of a new student entering a charter school. And the third one will be to create a state or local addition to the per-pupil allotment of a charter school student to compensate for facility expenses. So this is a whole new landscape on public charter, so I think we need to stay on top of that one. I don't know, Mr. Trotta, if you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. The other one is the maintenance of effort lease payment legislation. I believe that dropped today as well. Dr. Hardings, I know you led the charge on that last year. I don't know if you'd like to add any comments to that?
Sure. The basic issue with this bill or this group of bills is that there are some counties that would like to, for alternate financing-type projects, like the Barbara Ingram School or like what's being considered for the hub, to allow the county to exempt, exclude from maintenance of effort any funds that they put towards that alternative financing project. So if the county were to contribute money to the hub or to some other privately financed or alternately financed project, they wouldn't necessarily, that money wouldn't count towards the maintenance of effort calculation either during the term of the lease or after the lease is expired. So what counties, what the individuals dropping this bill want is just to create some clarity that the county can exclude it from maintenance of effort if, ahead of time, when the lease is originally signed, it's very clear to both the local Board of Education and to the county governing authority how those funds are going to be used in terms of a maintenance of effort calculation down the road. I'm not sure I explained that very well, but essentially, it allows the county and the school board to decide ahead of time, before a lease is signed, on an alternative financed construction project, whether any funds that the county contributes are going to be counted towards maintenance of effort or be counted outside of maintenance of effort. So with the amendments that have been made to the bill, I haven't seen the final bill, it looks like it's alleviated... it looks like it's alleviated our concerns from last year. But we'll wait until we see the final product before we make that decision.
And I do understand, and again, there's a lot of concern throughout the state of how they're going to pay, different school districts are going to pay for their infrastructure needs. And my understanding is that Montgomery County may be looking at this legislation. So it's hard to tell what the final product will look like, but I think we're going to need to track that one closely. And then finally, the post-Labor Day bill that seems to be of interest, starting with quite a lot of newspaper coverage on Governor-elect Hogan signing Comptroller Franchot's petition. I would remind people that Governor O'Malley also signed the petition. So I guess what I would just share, other than we all, I think certainly appreciate the need for this to stay at our local districts. It needs to stay with our community. We know our families better, our students better, our teachers, our employees, and it certainly is a major, I think, local autonomy issue. I would say that, looking at the article in the paper, Comptroller Franchot quoted that the bureaucracy is going to oppose this. And he said that there are enough soft days in the current school schedule to permit the change. And I would push back strongly against both of those statements. It's not the bureaucracy that's going to oppose this because it's not the bureaucracy that puts our school calendars together. It's our school calendar committee. It's our teachers. It's this board. It's the community. It's the parents. It's the input. It's not the bureaucrats who build that calendar. And secondly, I don't think any of us in this whole school system would feel that we have soft days in our calendar. So again, this, I believe, will be a pretty strong move to bring this bill forward. So I would appreciate my colleagues, any opportunity you have when you're in Annapolis, downstate, to certainly oppose that and speak strongly in opposition to post-Labor Day. And again, it is one of our, it's on our list of legislative priorities. Any other comments or questions on any of the Legislative Response Team's report? Further comments? All right. Any other committee reports? May the Board of Directors is meeting tomorrow, assuming people can get downstate. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. And we will get that binder out to everyone once it's completed. Future agenda items, just a brief review. The February 3rd, our next meeting, the State of the County. We've changed the schedule so that we can all attend that. And our agenda planning will be back here at 9:30. And then we're moving into a work session. So it's going to be another full day. The work session will be the digital learning plan. And then we'll go into closed session after that. We are trying to renegotiate with the county commissioners a time that we can start our joint meetings and work together on that. We've, for the last few years, have met in the mornings once a month. And at this point, with the new Board of County Commissioners moving their meetings to just in the afternoon, starting at 1:00, we're having to renegotiate how we can all get together. And I would hate to see that opportunity of coming together. We have such a strong history of a good relationship with our county commissioners. I hope that we're able to resolve that and get back to our joint meetings. So looking for board member comments. Mr. McCos, any more comments?
Comments.
No more wrestling comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Very good. Mrs. Harschman?
Nothing.
Ms. Williams?
No comments.
Moving on. Mr. Gessford?
I have two things I need to bring forward. The first thing is, this past week, I was going through some policies, and Mrs. Fisher isn't here for me to get some clarification on this, but I thought I'd bring it to you. I'm reading under Policy ICA, a school calendar. Prior to the close of the school year, the Board shall adopt the school calendar for ensuing school year. The superintendent, or his or her designee, shall be responsible for preparing the calendar for submission to the Board. I think the Board voted for two years.
We did.
And according to policy, you can only do one. Just want to throw that up to you.
And I'm, go ahead.
That's the only one I just, that's that.
Those are your comments?
That's comment, yeah. And the second one would be, I noticed a comment that I brought up about a month ago about security. And I, probably about three, four months ago, there was a gentleman that came forth, and he was quite adamant about his comments. And I was a little concerned for safety. And I didn't know what our Board has, policy-wise, for conducting, you know, somebody coming up here and getting upset and maybe bringing something that may be potentially dangerous to one of the Board members. I know that gentleman was pretty irate, was kind of getting to the point where I was thinking, do I need to get up and get behind so that I could retain him a little bit? Because he was getting kind of agitated, and I think he walked up to the Board at the time, and I don't know if he was going to shake someone's hand, but you don't really know what their intentions are, you know? They always say it's fun and games until somebody gets hurt. And I think, you know, sometimes we need to think about safety for our staff, you know? You're coming into this area, and there's no egress. There's no way to get out. And I just want to bring that to some thought. Maybe the staff can look into that and just put it out there that, you know, there are, the times have changed. People get angry, and they could take things into their own hands. And we have no way to protect, you know, our staff up here or staff back there if we have a parent or a citizen in the community that decides that he just doesn't like the day and time, and he comes and takes that on one of our staff members. So just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
Do you have any specific suggestions or just putting it out for staff?
Well, I just think maybe the staff. I mean, I think we have enough bright staff members here that Mr. Ganley, I think he's capable of thinking of the exits and the way that we can protect our staff. I mean, there's other folks here that can do that. So that's not my expertise, but I think that we have enough people that we can kind of get together and say, what happens if? You know, so that, you know, there is a plan if somebody decides to do something, and then we know what to do. Just putting that out there.
So noted. Thank you. Dr. Hardings? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Ridner, going in the wrong direction.
That's quite all right. I would like to mention that I met yesterday with a young student, not young, a student at Smithburg High School, from Smithburg High School. She is one of the five finalists and will be part of a, the state Student Council group will be meeting, and she will be making a presentation that would allow her, hopefully see her being elected as the next Board member, state Board member. She is putting together her resume, her, working on speeches, her speech and campaign strategy. She's going to be meeting with Dr. Wilcox to talk about school issues in the very near future. And then on February 7th, she will be part of a presentation. Her name is Quinn Wondelowski, a very, very bright and motivated young person, very much like our student rep here. So I think it's a compliment to her that she has been chosen as one of the five finalists. And I wish her nothing but the best, and I'm certain that she will represent Washington County student government very effectively in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Now, sorry, Dr. Hardings?
That's okay. Just two, two quick items. One on the calendar. We also have another policy, which is BDF-E2, which is Calendar Advisory Committee, provides the charge to that committee. And under the charge, I'll just read from the policy. It says, "Develop two," and then in parentheses, "two consecutive school-year calendars for the public school system within legal parameters and contractual provisions." Operation specifications, reports to the Board of Education shall focus on recommendations for two consecutive school-year calendars. So clearly, we're within that, within the provisions of that policy. And regarding Policy ICA, it says that, as Mr. Gessford said, "Prior to the close of each school year, the School Board shall adopt the school calendar for the ensuing school year." That ensures that before the school year is out, the school year for the next year has been established. I don't see anything there that says the School, the Board shall adopt a school calendar only for the ensuing school year. It simply says that the next school year has to be completed by the time school gets out the year before. So it doesn't say that you can't do it for any time further in advance than that. It simply says that by the end of one year, you have to have the calendar done for the next year. So perhaps it's worth clarifying that, but I don't see where anything that we did is outside the bounds of either of those two policies. Second item, I attended the Lobbying Coalition meeting on January 7th. The representative, the new lobbyist from Madison Canning was there. Madison Canning's a 23-year-old firm. The new lobbyist who will be working with Washington County had a pretty impressive resume. He worked in the Speaker's Office. Actually, he worked, he was a beneficiary of Leroy Myers defeating Casper Taylor. Because when Casper Taylor was defeated by Leroy Myers, Michael Bush became the Speaker, and this individual, as a staff member for Michael Bush, moved to the Speaker's Office. So that was an interesting bit of local connection. He also worked for the Department of Legislative Services. He was staffed to the Economic Matters Committee. He really had an impressive resume and clearly has a lot of contacts in Annapolis, actually on both sides of the aisle. The six priority items that the Legislative, the Lobbying Coalition will take forward this year include the widening of I-81 from West Virginia to I-70, so developing plans and architectural work for that. Currently, it's only planned to be expanded to three lanes up to Exit 1 in Williamsport, and the effort is to try to get it expanded to three lanes all the way to I-70. Second item is construction planning and design funds for the Eastern Boulevard Professional Court Bridge. Third item is funding for rewatering the CNO Canal in Williamsport and repair of the aqueduct. The third item is funding for the Civil War Heritage Area, which many local organizations use to bring tourism dollars into Washington County. The fifth item is to change the liquor law to allow some downtown festival areas that would allow certain times of year when there can be open containers in relation to festivals downtown. And the final item is to develop and establish a bond bill to fund, help to fund improvements for the back of the house in the Maryland Theater. As Mrs. Brightman said, the Lobbying Coalition's Day in Annapolis will be February 4th. That'll begin with a lunch at 11:30. I'm sure if you contact Jim Kirchvoll at the Greater Haderstown Committee, he can give you details as to where. They will have meetings with legislators from 12 until 4:00. And then they have their annual Washington County, we mean business reception that starts at 4:00. I know we'll have a number of students there participating in that. I believe some of the students from Tech High in robotics and their biotech program. So that's the summary on my attendance at the meeting at the Lobbying Coalition. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the Lobbying Coalition meeting then on January 7th. And I will just add to Dr. Harding's comments that one reason that they decided to go with Manis Canning and Associates is that they do have a large number of lobbyists that can be assigned, and a lot, many of them are specialists in certain areas and can really work the Annapolis scene effectively. So I'm not sure I can pronounce his name. It's John Favazia?
That's why I didn't try, Donna.
You didn't even try. Smart man. Okay. Also, I attended the Drug and Alcohol Commission meeting at the Red Cross on January 15th. And it's an organization that's been, it was mandated by the Governor many years ago. And it's sort of a wraparound service where many different members of our community who serve our young people, our families, the entire community who have drug and alcohol issues, they all come together and be sure that they're networking and doing the right things at the right time, also educational. But I suggested, and they were aware of the recent health survey that we had our work session over, and they're going to have a presentation from Meritas Hospital and be sure that we, again, have everyone on the same page, pulling in the same direction. All right. I think that brings us to the end of the agenda, seeing no more business. We are adjourned. So how would you pronounce that?